Special meeting of the Lake County School Board to order for this Thursday, December 22, 2016. Before we begin, if we would stand first for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin this morning with some public input. I just have the one card. Courtney Franklin, come on up.
Merry Christmas, first of all, and Happy New Year. I'm thrilled to be here. I think you absolutely, I've been watching carefully, the superintendent's search, and I think you're absolutely making the right decision on who you had to start with. That being said, I'm a teacher, and part of my job, as I see it, is to reflect on the lessons that I've taught. What was good about it? Who got it? What was bad about it? How could I change it? Was it the strategy that I used? Was it my delivery? Or was it the background of the student? And that the student wasn't quite ready to hear that lesson, and then I needed to dig deeper into the background? So as part of my reflection, the other day, as I was driving home, I'm realizing that this is a whole new group of people. This board has not been together, obviously, the last month, but two years and four years, right? And then we will be having a new superintendent. I think it's really important for you guys to pause, take a minute, think back about where we've come in the last eight years or so. Eight years ago, a lot of people have a very short memory, and they forget, there was chaos on this board before Dr. Moxley took over. You couldn't even have a calm meeting. I used to go to school, I've been going to school board meetings for over a decade, and I used to go to school board meetings for the sure, for the sheer entertainment value. People would yell at each other, people would storm out. We have such a cohesive, calm group of people now, and a lot of that has to do with the last eight years. We were, granted, we are a C district now, but a lot of that cannot be just laid at the feet of the superintendent or past boards. Common Core, No Child Left Behind, you know, the class size amendment, all sorts of extra testing, a lot of different things outside of their control has come to, brought us to this point. So while it is your responsibility that we're a C district, it is not all your fault, nor is it the fault of the superintendent. So I need you, because I will continue to keep coming to school board meetings, I need you to understand where we've been and how far we've come, and that you have a great group of people, and we have so much talent in Lake County, right here, right under your nose, there's so much talent. All we have to do with that new, with your new board, and now our new superintendent, is to tap into that talent a little bit more. And I urge you to pause and take a moment and think about how far you've come, how far Lake County has come, and just get it to that next level. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing and putting it all into perspective for us, too. That's all the public input we have today, so we'll move into our first topic, which is the discussion selection of who we are going to offer a contract to be our next superintendent. Is anybody interested in kicking off the discussion, or do we have any questions that still might be outstanding? Or certainly, we've had the last day or so to reflect on all the information that has come before us in the last couple of weeks, and if there's anything that...
Well, I know I sent you all a, I had some information come to me through the Leesburg community, and I sent it out as, pretty much out of due diligence. I've done my due diligence on my part and feel confident that that was, for me, that's not an issue that we need to necessarily dredge up. I feel it was more an issue between the previously elected board and, of that district, and the previously elected, or the, yeah, the board of that district and the previously elected superintendent. So I just wanted to pass that on out of, you know, so that we all had, were aware. Because I didn't know if everybody was aware, because I wasn't.
Well, you know, I'm sure everybody got an email to that effect, and about something that came in, but that, there's always two sides to any story. And, but I think that we are going in the right way, and the decision that I think we're fixing to make is going to be for the best of the county and the kids of our, for replacement of Dr. Moxley come July. So do you want a motion now, or you want further discussion?
We've got a motion, then.
I make a motion, then, that we offer the contract to Diane Carnegie for our new superintendent.
All right, there's a motion by Senator, and a second by Bill. Any other discussion on this one?
Do we need to, would the public want our explanations of why we're voting?
It almost, it almost feels like we're coming into this with very little fanfare, but in reality, you know, leading up to this point, I think that anybody who's been watching this process and has been a part of it knows how excited, just everybody in the community is about this lady and how excited we are. But, yeah, it's almost kind of ceremoniously being approved, but in reality, there is a lot more excitement than, than the, it might suggest, but I don't know if we need to...
Less is more.
Sometimes it is, you're right.
The only, um, I guess, one thing I wanted to say was, the one negative, and I put that in quotes literally, that I've heard, is, is, can this be too good to be true? And, and the only thing I can say is that we have to take that leap of faith. So with that, I'm ready to vote.
Ready to vote.
Well, I'll make one comment.
Sure.
And, and at the beginning of each of the interviews, the six, and we've spoken about it a couple of times, that I had them do a quick personality test. I use it in my office, and it's not a pass or fail, it's how you deal with someone. So can I read just for a second how she scored?
I would love to hear.
Okay. "Others see you as sensible, cautious, careful, and practical. They see you as clever, gifted, or talented, but modest. Not a person that makes, who makes friends too quickly or easily, but someone who is extremely loyal to friends you do not, to friends you do not make," oh, you do make, sorry, "and who expect the same loyalty in return. Those who really get to know you realize it takes a lot to shake your trust in your friends, but equally, that it takes you a long time to get over if that trust is ever broken." I think in observing her, more and more, it began to play out for me.
I just want to say also, in this process, and I'm glad that Mr. Mathias brought this up about bringing the people in versus us trying to do it just with online interview, because I'm more into the same thing. I like to shake a person's hand, I like to see them face to face, because I will tell you upfront, with the documents that we have before us, she was not one of my top candidates. But after she coming in and meeting all the candidates individually, then that changed my mind and perspective of the, of the situation, because I felt then, now, you just can't go by paper alone, which I learned that years ago. I had a person that interviewed for a position and had all these documents and said that they knew all this, about this job, and then whenever they got the job, they didn't know it was all on paper. It wasn't in actual field that they knew the knowledge. But the other thing is, I've been involved in, this is the second event that I've been involved in, something like this with the City of Taveries, when we hired our city administrator. And so, and I feel like it went smooth, but I feel like this went smoother, because number one, we did it wrong the first time, and we had to go back and correct it. And I think we're doing it right today, right, Mr. Johnson?
All right, I think we're ready to vote. All is in favor of offering the contract to Diane Carnegie, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay. That carries five zero unanimously. Thank you all. Next item on our list is the, an emergency item for its timeliness, discussion and action of a legislative liaison retention. Kristi, I know this is an item that you had requested be placed on the agenda, so I'll let you kind of take the lead on...
Yeah, so, I'm just handing out to you the Florida bar schedule. Hold on, I'll just keep one and hand them all to you. And there should be enough for, I printed seven, should have been eight. And then, here's your own legislative priorities, which, nothing has to be decided today. So the idea is that we have, that we hire a, or contract with a legislative liaison in order to get our message to Tallahassee much more clearly. We, in the past, often make the legislative, you know, we make the legislative priorities list, and then it feels, at least to those of us who have been in the public, as if it's not heard very well. So having my own experience in Tallahassee, it's a matter of being present, knocking on doors, having your face in their face, and then a legislative liaison gives you, and we did with the recess bill, have a legislative liaison through PTA. They can meet with people at lunch, who can then meet with somebody, who can meet with somebody, who can get your bill heard at least. And so that's the sort of advantage that a legislative liaison gives you, and that wouldn't stop us from having our legislative liaison. As a matter of fact, the company I met with suggested that we all go, and I didn't know this, to Lake, Lake County days. So, not to step on your toes at all. And we would go, and we would go staggered, like not in the same meeting as you. So, just to have a bigger presence in Lake County, especially since we've, we've essentially lost Hayes, we do have representation, but it isn't in Umatilla anymore in the Senate. We do have good representation in the House, and we have some important priorities, and spending some money upfront, should, the idea is spending some money upfront will get us a good return for our investment. So that would be the case. The, oh, and then the idea would be to piggyback on top of contracts, sort of on top of the Lake County, county of contract, which is what Claremont did. And I'm always looking this way and feel like I'm, sorry.
Dr. Burns, this is so, so timely and so spot on. It is one of the items that we were going to, that in a joint meeting with the County Commission, was to look at us working with the lobbyists for Lake County. I think that presence is necessary outside of the legislative days, when you get 15 minutes, that you're absolutely right, it's breakfast and coffee, and still pushing the agenda. I think that the lobbyists for Lake County, for the County Commission, brought an additional, like $7 million back to the county. And so it, it is an item that's on the list when we meet with the County Commission. For me personally, and I feel less strong than I did before, that we do have a lobbying group, which is the Florida School Board Association. For me personally, I've never felt we've gotten our bang for the buck. We spend $21,000 for our membership right now, and, and I just get, want to give you a comparison, because I started looking at, I thought it was the fact that, like, Dade and Broward had more control was why we never got really any consideration. And they spend like 20, we spend 23, they spend like 27 or something. So just, it's disproportionate, the amount that we pay, for such a little benefit. And, and Senate Bill 729 does allow us the option to pull out of the FSBA, and that we could then divert that $21,000 we're paying in dues to this initiative. So I'm not as hard about pulling out now, because I do see some benefit of the FSBA. I don't know that I see $21,000 worth, but, so that's where my head's at. I'm, I more than support this, this initiative.
I do, I do also, and I, to me, at least a Lake County person would be more to, to Lake County needs, as opposed to the FSBA, which is overseeing the entire School Boards Association, and especially when we have the change in the guard at the legislative arena, and it's coming out of most of the larger counties. So that disproportionate amount, it might not be, it doesn't seem fair at all, but it's because they have to play into those people to get priorities for the Florida School Board Association. So I do feel like it would, it would benefit us. I do.
You know, the other thing, too, is that when you consider our legislative priority list and compare that against FSBA's, it's really one and the same. So FSBA is certainly not going to decide to stop lobbying on behalf of these priorities if, if we're not sending our $21,000 that way.
We can earmark, and this is something I think we can decide at, like, this was brought today so that we could have maybe a discussion, the December 9th meeting, or maybe the contract people have, I don't know exactly how that would work out. Because, because the, as I gave you, the timeline is short, we can earm, basically earmark funds, like, or, or projects that we would like to say, hey, you know, for example, the Lake Tech was a, was a, was a project that they did. And that was a larger one, but there are, I'm sure, we can come up with a list of priorities and then decide on it.
I'll give you a good example, and this one was recent, that Representative Metz was attempting to eliminate the DCD, District Cost Differential. And I called the FSBA, wanted them to get behind it, and they would not. And so that would have benefited Lake County to the tune of $4.4 million. So let's have someone, if we're paying them, there should be some expectation of results.
Paying them in there, they're actually speaking specifically to our interests. That's right. So, okay, so for next steps, in terms of timeliness, though, that you suggested, what would be the next step for us in this process?
This I'm not positive about. I mean, I think, I need, I would need, like, Carol McCloskey. I would need more guidance on how we piggyback a contract, and then, and then how we come up with our list of priorities, because that list is going to depend, basically, I've been told, you know, anything under $2 million is considered a smaller lift, and that would be a smaller contract. It depends on how big our contract is. So it would depend, like, I didn't, I didn't have permission on the board, so I, you know, didn't invite a particular firm. I don't, I don't, I don't know enough about the, about the process to bring it back.
What, what about if, if our chair met with the chair of the County Commission, and just sort of, and then you could meet with the consultant, or the lobbyist, and then bring it back to us?
I'll do that. Yeah, Commissioner, Chairman Sullivan now, at this point, and I had a brief conversation the other day. We didn't really get too deep into the particular issues. It was mostly talking about his meeting with Diane Carnegie. But we'll, we'll get together and see how we can combine resources for the biggest bang for the buck.
I'm not of the opinion that we need someone, that they have someone and we have someone.
Right.
I'm more inclined that it'd be the same. That's just for me.
Yeah. I don't know. I mean, whatever. Like, I've heard, I've heard, I mean, we definitely want them advocating for Lake County School, so I don't know exactly what a combined contract looks like, you know, with them, you know, so that's the question, is it, is it a, is it an advocacy that's separate? Or, like, how do they allocate their people? I guess that's more the question.
Sure. Well, okay, so I'll, I'll reach out to Chairman Sullivan and bring back some information about what that relationship would look like, what would our role be in ensuring, what would be the process to make, to make sure that, you know, obviously, they're looking to make sure their needs are met, and so are we. So how does, how do both of those occur?
Right.
And I'll, so I'll bring them back some information, then we can make a decision.
So would it have been, I'm sorry, just so I know procedurally, would it have been appropriate to have that company be here?
Not for those.
Probably not.
Right. I didn't think so, because, because we hadn't decided to go with anything.
Right, right, right.
Okay, so that's was...
Yeah.
Okay.
And we would be owed to piggyback versus having to fit it out for proposals, because it may be a state bid or something.
I think that's the motivation behind this, is to piggyback it, but...
It's county.
It's county.
Yeah, it's county, and then the city of Claremont's to piggyback already.
Okay. All right. See what I can dig up and what kind of information. Thank you for bringing that forward. Certainly, as we talk about our legislative priorities, there's nothing almost more important for us than to get this message heard. And the more power that we can come with that, the better. Right.
Mr. Dodd, if I could get clarification, what would you like staff to help support you in that research? Is there anything you'd like us to do while you're speaking with Commissioner Sullivan?
I suppose if we want to get some, you referred to getting some information about piggybacking, so perhaps if I, if Carol wouldn't mind providing some perspective on that and making sure that we've got that process looking smooth?
Sure, we'll go ahead and do the research from the procurement standpoint, how their contract is set up, what it means for us to do that. Is it your desire to, on the January 9th meeting, to put on the discussion agenda to talk about those topics or those priorities? Would you like me to add that to the agenda?
Yes, yes, please.
Okay, I will be happy to do that.
Mr. Chair, if staff could also look at what that would look like, should we want to look at pulling out of the FSBA?
Certainly, let, if I may make a comment about that. You know, they changed the statute on that. It used to be a board joined as a unit, so you either were a member or you were not a member. But now they changed it that it doesn't have to be a full board, that if one or two or more decided, I don't want to participate or be part of that, your individual proration of that membership fee could be pulled out and used in a different way. So it's no longer the whole board.
But what does that amount change?
Yes.
Can we get a cost analysis of that?
I will get more, I will get more information about that, but they did change the statute that last...
729.
Yes.
And you can provide a cost?
Pardon me?
Can you provide a costing?
Sure, sure.
If one stayed, would it be $10,000 instead?
Because the FSBA does have a lot of legislative pull, legislative power.
That they've never used for us, in my opinion, my board.
But there's a big accountability bill coming. The, the big train bills, they have power through those big train bills.
I, I think there's pros and cons both ways, and I think you just have to weigh that as a board, and I think you have to weigh it individually, for what you feel as a board member they support you in, because there's a lot of other services in the membership in addition to the lobbying. Peace.
That's what, I was really aggravated about the DCD, but now, that's when I tempered myself, I'm not as aggravated.
Right.
Because my question would be, you know, if you're trying to, you know, learn more about being a board member and being certified and all, they have a program for that. And so if we were to drop out of that, is there something else that would be available to do along the same line? Is what I'd be interested in knowing also.
And that, we would have to search what topics you were particularly interested in, then go find that support. I believe there is another organization that isn't like FSBA, but similar to, and I'm not sure quite what they, what all they, how, the broad scope that they have. The other point of reference, and I know, Ms. Luke, you know about this, with this Central Florida School Boards Coalition, they do a legislative platform, and the bigger districts that are involved there, like your Orange Counties, your Seminoles, Polk, they have lobbyists, and they are part of the meeting. So they come, so we've gotten the value of information, but we haven't gotten the value of representation. We get the value of being part of the Central Florida School Boards Coalition, and the advocacy that comes out of that, as being part of that, but it's, it's as that group and those common legislative issues, which are important. However, it's not the specific for Lake County. So, you know, you do have that as well, but again, I think for what you're talking about, so you may not want to overlap services, but complement what we already have.
But also Seminole pulled out of the FSBA, correct?
They did, they did.
And is it possible, Mrs. Luke, you could make contact to see what they, what was the driver?
When we first began this discussion about a lobbyist versus FSBA, I asked out the Central Florida School Boards Coalition, do you see benefit in the FSBA representation? And immediately, their representative, representative, their board representative said, no. She didn't even, there was no hesitation at all. And then she said, we are pulling out. So I'm quite certain it's similar to the lines that we're talking about. I, I did have a board member approach me after the meeting privately and say that they have a lobbyist, and they don't see the value in the lobbyist, that he had been a school, a longtime school board member, and he didn't feel like they got enough done. So it might be something we should consider in regards to how will we evaluate the effectiveness of the lobbyist. And I'm all for it. I do think we need a bigger voice. I have been to Tallahassee twice myself. I see the look sometimes that we get, and we don't have the attention that we deserve. And, and I don't think FSBA, sometimes even in the train bills, gets the representation. I mean, we're all saying the same thing, and it seems like everything just keeps sliding right through. So it wouldn't, I think it would be prudent of us to make sure that we have some kind of measurable, how do we know?
There's a, you know, one other perspective I'd like to throw into the discussion eventually, too, and that's the thoughts from our prospective superintendent, because I know that she spoke pretty strongly about having a strong role in Tallahassee and, and bringing some great experience with relationships that she had brought from Clay County. So I think that'd be, good to hear that eventually, too.
The other, the other idea, just to let you, I know we will be receiving information from FSBA on master board training, and I know some of you remember going through that, but that will come up, you need to think about that.
That was a success.
You may not want to partake in that, but I just want to remind you that we'll be coming to you soon, and, and you just need to think about what you want to do.
So, so not a fan?
I would not vote to do it again. So there's my position, it's out in the public. That's just my point.
A third.
There you go.
Was that valuable? Okay, all right.
There are probably some other ways where we might be able to achieve the same benefits. You know, maybe, maybe we might be able to recruit some folks in our, within professional development or HR to assist us through some of those personality exercises, or, you know, understanding each person's leadership style.
Without being forced to.
That would be far more cost effective.
Bill has a personality test.
Bill has a personality test.
I'll hand out my 10 questions and we move on.
Sure. Okay, so, so I think staff has the direction now for what they need to bring back, and we'll, we'll add that to January 9th agenda for discussion, to have some more, more discussion around this. Now, in terms, so, I mean, is that going to meet the timeliness standard here? Because I know that...
I don't think there's another choice to meet the...
There really isn't. But, you know, based on your calendar here, that you've, that you've shared...
I mean, at least we're before, we're before session.
Okay.
You know, I mean, that's the best we can do.
Sure, yeah.
So, I'm not going to suggest we meet at Christmas.
Well, you know, I know, we've probably set a record for the most times a new board has met in the first month of office, but, you know, we've been so focused on one particular topic, and certainly that was the most important thing for us to focus on, and now we're ready to begin, to hit the ground running on a whole bunch of other things, and certainly this would be tops there. So thanks for bringing that forward.
Is there, along with our, our decision that we just made prior to this item, did we need to bring our consultant up, as far as where do we go the next step on this with the contract?
So the, next step historically, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong on this one, but the chair and the attorney have kind of worked together to negotiate that contract. If you all are in agreement that we should do that, then hopefully we'll have something to come back to you, as soon as we can, we can get it. I imagine the starting point would be Dr. Moxley's existing contract is, you know, we've put in there the language about the performance bonuses and how that is structured. So, and I think that was kind of what our intention was going into this, where we set a certain target-based salary and set a certain target for, for performance bonuses.
Correct.
And then, you know, I mean, the rest is probably, you know, getting done into the minutia that I'm sure you'd be able to come to some agreement on.
But that will begin immediately, yes.
The contract negotiation?
Yes. You have it with you now? Well, I saw Mrs. Carnegie is here, so, y'all want to take a quick break and then come back?
Bill, you've kind of let the cat out of the bag there, but yes, I saw her sneak in during the last bit of discussion, and certainly I think this would be an appropriate time to provide an introduction and, you know, an official congratulations from the Lake County School Board that we are going to offer a contract, and so, welcome, and thank you. If you'd like, feel free, come on up and say a few words, certainly the public would love to hear from you.
Say your name and address.
It's on file.
On file, that's a good one.
Good morning. I am just full of excitement and anticipation. This is an honor, this is an opportunity, and it's a challenge. And I just want to thank each of you, board members, for putting your trust in me, and I promise I will not let you down. Also want to extend my thanks to you, Dr. Moxley. Thank you for your years of outstanding service to the school district. I have some big shoes to fill, and I want to thank you for your support. I have some big shoes to fill, and I want to thank you for your support this week, and I look forward to working alongside you throughout this transition. And I want to thank the search committee. You guys were tough, you were thorough, and it was extremely educational for me. Thank you for all your support as well. And I want to thank the community that I've met along the way, just the fabulous individuals. Thank you as well for all your support, and I know that together we're going to do great things for our kids. We have forty-two thousand kids plus in this district, and every one of them counts. We have a five-hundred-and-fifty-four million dollar budget, and every penny counts. And I just want to tell you that in my mind, they will always count, and I will make you three promises. One, I promise that every decision I make will be in the best interest of every child. Number two, I promise that I will work with you as a team. And number three, I promise to approach this job with integrity and transparency. I know we have a great foundation of support with this community. I know that we have outstanding administrators, principals, teachers, and support staff. And I know that we have some challenges ahead, and we will undertake them together with a vengeance. I want to wish all of you a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and I look forward to whenever you guys have me come back, ready to get to work. And I would be remiss if I didn't say my biggest thanks to my husband Scott, who is in the back, who's with me here today, my rock, my friend, and he'll be my continuous source of support and my cheerleader along the way, as he stands beside me throughout this journey. So I look forward to getting to know him as well. So just thank you all so much.
Well done.
Thank you.
I know I've asked before, and I've... I did turn it on. And I've reviewed the, I've reviewed the tape from April fifteenth. And I, and I've spoken to the county chamber, the people that, the people who spoke with her, and I know that there is a desire to get out in the community and there to be a transition. A six-month transition is longer than the presidential transition. I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we, and we can't legally, and I'm not suggesting that we end Superintendent Moxley's contract early. That's not what I'm suggesting. What I am saying is that who is the, who is the face, and at what point becomes, does she become the face of the district? At what point does she run the district? At what point does she become the boss? And that needs to be hammered out. And probably sooner rather than later, because I'm already getting questions.
You're absolutely right, and I'm not, I'm not sure how much information you'd like to share at this point. Dr. Moxley and I had a, had a conversation, and I've also had a brief conversation with Ms. Carnegie also about what that transition looks like. And certainly there is a benefit to being able to get out and learn the district, walk the halls of all the schools, and certainly you can attest that that takes a certain amount of time with how many schools we have and to become familiar with those issues. And so in that period, Dr. Moxley would continue to maintain the day-to-day operations and decision-making, if you will, while our new superintendent would have the opportunity to get out and learn the operation. During that period also, that gives the opportunity to then set the tone in the seat for the decisions that we're going to be making coming up. There are some big ones, the strategic finance plan, the allocations, and our new superintendent would be weighing in on all of that. And then if, I don't know how much you'd like to speak about, about any transition, but if you could add to that.
I'd be happy to.
Sure.
I'm a firm believer in succession planning, and I think when you look at the business model, they do plan for succession. And so that was all part in, in my decision of when I spoke to the board last year in April, in, because when you get the gift of time and you use that time wisely, good things happen, and you have a solid foundation that is built. I had an opportunity to meet with Diane Carnegie the other day, and we had such a wonderful conversation. And she has a very detailed foundational one-hundred-day plan that I think is stellar, and that, that's really one of the things you highlighted that really spoke to you when she came and interviewed. And I think that when I came on board, I had the gift of time given by the board at that time. And that afforded me the opportunity, without all the day-to-day minutia of administrative paperwork that anchors you to the office, it gave me the ability to go out to the schools and spend time. I had shared with Mr. Dodd that when I go and do a tour of the schools, it takes me two weeks, and that's about a twenty-minute drive-by. And that's not acceptable when you're coming in as the new superintendent. You want to build that, that rapport, you want to get into classrooms, you want to spend time, and I heard Ms. Carnegie say that. She wants that. That is paramount to her foundational entry plan into this district. And, and I, I totally support that because I had that, and that was so valuable. And then when she does take over the reins, she's hitting the ground running. She's got her plan in place, she's got her organizational chart, she's ready to do the decisions that she needs to make to set this district here going forward, as you're doing budget, all those kinds of things. So I encourage this board to support that. So what I had shared with Mr. Dodd is that in my mind, I was hoping that we got to this point sooner than later. Not to say a six-month is too long, nobody needs to shadow anybody for six months, you don't need to do that. But what I thought we could do, because in the plan, you put a position in there, you call it Superintendent Emeritus, it's the, it's the other position, call it the transitional position, that forwarded, because you had great foresight to do this. So whenever Ms. Carnegie can come, let her have some solid time to get out, visit the schools, spend time at the schools, visit the departments, not just with the administration, but with the employees. That took me, I think, I spent a month doing all of that, believe it or not, I really, really did, and I spent at least an hour and a half in every department with the employees. And that took me that amount of time. She has two key positions right out of the gate that really, when we return from the winter break, should be advertised, if that's what she wants to do. And I have it structured that way. We really talked about it as a staff in this transition to give flexibility to the incoming superintendent. And so in order for her to do that, though, she has to have in her mind what she wants for her organizational chart, is she going to keep the positions the same, is she going to, but she has two key positions that really, she can have the time to really look at those, look at those jobs descriptions, do I need to change them? Do I need to reorg that a little bit? And then when she has that decision, she puts them out for advertisement and fills those, because those vacancies are coming sooner than later. I mean, we're all kind of in line together, and especially going into the budget cycle, it would be great if we could have some overlap time with our chief financial officer position. But again, I, I can't stress enough to give her the gift of time. So in my mind, I did speak with Osceola County, they just did this, and this is where we got the idea. And what they did is, because they had an earlier spring break that last year, and I spoke to the incoming superintendent who's there now, and she said that when she came on board, which was a little later than where we are now, but that she came in in a transitional role and took those weeks up ahead of time to get to know everything. Now, she was returning back to the district, so she knew, and she shortened that window of time. But she said that was such valuable time. At spring break, when the staff went home for spring break, they exited on vacation, if you will, that was my exit as the authority superintendent, the one that actually has the title. When the employees came back from spring break, the new superintendent was very much present in their office, and it was a clean break. Everybody, I mean, there was a clean closure, there was a clean start. But in the, in the preliminary stages, Ms. Carnegie is the incoming superintendent, she has license to go everywhere that I would go, and frankly, in what my plan is, is that the month of January, I will bring closure to my department visits, my, my school visits, everything. I will have that closure with folks, so that the month of February, or, or, you know, whenever, you know, you know, whenever, she is, she is the incoming superintendent, she is the face of the district as the incoming superintendent. Do that planning, do those relationship buildings, have those focus groups, parent meetings, chamber meetings. I won't attend any of those meetings anymore. I will, I will be the one that is chained to the office, if you will, behind closed doors, doing the paperwork, doing those day-to-day things, to give her the freedom to go out and do what she needs to do and fulfill her hundred-day plan to the highest quality that she has put forth. And I, that, that I think is the best way I can help support. And then when we switch, then I can be wherever she needs me to be, supporting whatever she needs me to be, but it will be on her terms and on her call. But I am here to make this district look wonderful moving forward. There is not a conflict here. I can't even imagine, after speaking with her, that we wouldn't work together very seamlessly. And so that's, that's kind of my thinking on it. I did share that with Ms. Carnegie with it, and, and so that's kind of my thinking.
When is our spring break decided?
Our spring break is March fifteenth, or March eleventh, I think it starts that week.
That's right.
If you want to do it, you know, a little bit before that or whatever. But I think the minute we turn it over, because there's some paperwork that has to go up to Tallahassee, because I sees being the constitutional officer, she begins being the constitutional officer, there needs to be a clean date of transition there because of legal legalities from unemployment and, and responsibility type thing. So there needs to be, when she has the position, she needs to have that, not only the authority, but the responsibility that pairs with that.
Yeah, and that was my other question, was, was essentially you both will have the same job description?
Well, well, actually...
Will your job description change?
Actually, there isn't a job description for the Superintendent Emeritus. So for example, if she, she, no, because there's this position...
I couldn't find one.
There's never been one of these. There's never been one of these, and I...
She was the first one that I can recall coming in in that status in years.
Right.
Because we always had an elected.
Right.
I looked this up as best as I could.
Sure. And when I came, because it was an elected superintendent, I came in as a consultant, so I was self-employed for four months. I don't recommend that in this situation, because it does move your retirement and dates and all those kinds of things back. But in this particular case, because this board had the foresight to put that position in, 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 in that Superintendent Emeritus, it can be incoming superintendent on the front end and Superintendent Emeritus on the back end, there isn't a job description. I called, so Osceola County, they did not have a job description either. So what they did, and what I think was a good model, so if Ms. Carnegie comes in, whatever date it is, you know, whatever date that is, she's coming in as incoming superintendent, she's in that holding superintendent position, she's, her job description is her one-hundred-day plan. You know, that, that she has so detailed out, or whatever she wants to propose with you. During that window of time, which is what I did, again, whatever your pleasure is on that and her pleasure, I used that time to do retreats with the board. We did the whole strategic planning process, we did priorities, we laid out our plan moving forward, all those things. So we could dedicate those workshops. I have, there's only one workshop in January, and it's January thirtieth. We have that one kind of planned out with some, you know, operational things. But then all the other ones, those can be hers, you know, moving, whether she's the incoming superintendent or the official one. She could have those, and you do those with your retreats, you do all those planning things. And then I would just be at the February two board regular meetings to enact the operational business part. And then that would be the last, the last board meeting in February would be my last board meeting. And so then when we come back in March, that first meeting in March is a workshop, she would be doing that, and then I would officially sign out as superintendent, she would officially sign on, and then she would be at all the rest of the meetings. So then you might ask, well, what will I do? So I will be at whatever role she would like me to be and whatever capacity she would like that to be. If that, and I would assume as we move on, that will become less and less, because she will then be more active in her role, then I will do some projects. We have some grants that are closing and closing out that I've been, you know, kind of worked on for the last several years. I'd like to be part of those closeouts and help do those final reports. I will work with those, it's actually one department, so I will actually work with that department. And then I had shared with Mr. Dodd, one of the things I did as an assistant superintendent in this district was work on SOPs, and then now here we are, you know, fifteen years later, and he and I both share that desire to get the SOP going. I'd like to use whatever time I have left. I have been working on it, but it, it always kind of takes a backseat to the day-to-day priorities, but I'd like to get that, if not closed, get that closed too, and I'd work with Mr. Dodd on that.
Okay, that seems, thank you for drawing that picture for me, because it seems much more reasonable, or not much more, just I didn't know the picture.
No, it lays it out.
My, I don't, I don't know if I heard right, did, who is going to be at the strategic finance planning meeting?
That would, that would be you all.
Oh, because I heard you, because I was like...
No, that would be you all, and, and if you wanted me there, I am here to serve you and to serve the, the new superintendent.
Okay, because it would make sense to have her there.
Absolutely.
And perhaps you as well, but for sure, I would think, who should be at a strategic finance planning meeting?
Yeah, all those things that I think are, that you might classify into a vision bucket, if you will, strategic finance plan, allocations, district staffing plan, all that stuff, the direction for that is going to be coming from our new superintendent.
Okay, okay. Just wanted to clarify, because I heard you wrong.
I think I would be kind of in that advisory to give procedural process things, but as far as content concerned, that, that's, that's this new team, and you need to go forward with that. But again, I am here to support and serve, because at the end of the day, all of us universally want what's right for this district all the time. So again, I am here to, to serve and support as you need, as much or as little as you need, and I understand that. And if it's, if it becomes on the little end, I am more than happy, there's enough work in this district that we never will have enough time to do, that I am, I am very project-oriented, and I will give you your money's worth as I fulfill my contract.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I think we've kind of ventured into board member comments. Did you have anything else, and I'll go back to Sandy.
I think I'm good.
All right. Sandy, did you have anything you'd like to share?
Yes, I did.
Sure.
In January, I understand that some of our schools, if not all our schools, are going to be required about due testing on the computers?
Much of the FSA testing or any of the, any of the end-of-course exams, all of that, there is requirements by the state for computer-based testing. In fact, we just submitted our computer survey to the state on our capacity for, to do that. There is a new regulation that we must test all of one subject or all of one grade level at a time. We have done our due diligence on that. Our principals, bless their hearts, they have been working very hard to make sure they have an accurate picture of, you know, how we're doing that, and, and, yeah, they've tightened that window up.
So, and what, two questions I have, do we have enough computers to go around to meet all the needs at the individual schools? And is our networking and everything that we have going to handle all this load at one time?
I'm going to ask, I'll ask Dr. Wheeler to take the networking question. The computer survey that was just completed, I did review that, that was completed in conjunction with our accountability department, Paula Wicker, Barry Farley, with Dr. Wheeler's team. To answer your question, do we have one-to-one computers? No. Do we ever have enough computers short of that? No. Do we have enough to do the testing and meet the requirement? Yes, because they're going to be, be testing in groups. And so the principals have pulled their computers that meet the criteria and the specifications, and they have a, they are working on their testing calendars and the rotations they will, that will work, and they have certified that to us.
Okay.
As far as the network, we will prioritize testing, so you can prioritize things on your networks, and testing will take priority over someone watching a video or something of that nature.
You hear that, Vance?
Well, because I can remember it was either last year or year before last year, year before last year, that was good, wasn't it? Year before last, that we had some type of testing that was required online, and we had some glitches. But it wasn't only our county, I understand it was throughout the state.
It was not on Lake County's, it was a state glitch, and it was with the, the testing provider, and yes, that was not good at all.
Because this is a one-time testing opportunity, from what I'm hearing from administrators, and so...
We have done our due diligence, and we are ready, you know, unforeseen mechanical thing that, you know, we can't foresee, but we want to make sure that the state is prepared and ready to go. And I think after that snap, who, I think they've taken a real hard look at that. at that. So we can trust that we've done our due diligence on our end, what we control.
Okay.
Good question. Thank you.
And also, I spoke with Superintendent Dr. Moxley about the comment I made at the last meeting, and she had assured me that she had no intentions of trying to fill those positions without the new superintendent's input. So I just wanted to share that with you, that it was never the intent that she would do something like that, but it's just, it's best that we have it aired out, so everybody is on the same page. Also, I understand her husband, she said, is Scott. And I understand, in speaking with her just recently, that he is the city administrator for Keystone Heights. So we'll be glad to welcome you into Lake County. Thank you. Oh, and Merry Christmas, y'all.
You didn't have anything else, did you? Or did you?
Merry Christmas, everyone.
All right. Very good.
I just want to say that, that throughout this process, I am actually looking forward to a good night's sleep. I don't know why. I like wake up at three in the morning thinking about this or that. And so, so to everyone who I know took a real interest in this decision, well done. To, to Dr. Burke, who's with us today, again, I can't say enough about your leadership and, and your organization's support of the process. And to this board, the, I know that each of us realize that it sets the legacy moving forward, and it will outlast me for sure. So again, Merry Christmas and wishing everyone a Happy New Year.
I just reiterate it. Welcome to Diane Carnegie and her husband Scott, and we're excited about moving forward. And Merry Christmas.
All right. And if you, if you get bored over the holidays, remember I suggested this before, really get those hamster wheels turning.
The two days, the two days.
Thinking about your priorities, whether they're budget neutral or whether they have a budgetary impact, you know, and we need to go through the strategic finance plan, because I think that when Mrs. Carnegie comes to town, I think she's going to be probably pretty interested in hitting the ground running. And so it'd be good for us to be ready and trying to really put some thought into some of those things that, you know, we might have campaigned on, or, you know, what, what the specifics start to really look like on those things. And we'll be ready to go with that, because time is going to be of the essence. Typically, we as a board have retreated in January and started putting that process together ahead of the budget. And this year, we're going to have a slightly slower start on that. But with the drive and motivation of this board and how hard you all have shown that you could work in the last couple of months, there's no question, we will be able to do an outstanding job out of it. And so thanks. And I know, Dr. Moxley, you had something else to add?
Yes, thank you. First, congratulations and welcome to Mr. and Mrs. Carnegie. Thank you so much for being here. We look forward to working with both of you and having you be part of our community. It is a wonderful place to be here in Lake County, so I know you will fit in very well. Second, I would like to have our HR departments stand up and be recognized. I really do. You know, there is never a dull moment in HR.
I'll stand.
The three of them need to stand up, and I know Morgan's not here.
I know who you are.
It's never a dull moment in HR, and there's never a lack of work to do, and there's more than, than, you know, they, they ever can get done in an eight-hour day. And to do this particular superintendent search at a time when it's very, very busy, and to do it in the timeframe that we did, the leadership and the support, I just really commend them and thank them.
It was an honor.
Yes. Thanks. And certainly Merry Christmas to everybody and Happy New Year.
All right. Mr. Johnson, do you have anything else to add?
Does this mean we can cancel the meeting on Christmas morning?
Any objection to adjourning? Seeing none? Have a very Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and Happy New Year.